This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so I am calling to order this June 15th meeting of the Monterey Select Board at 6:02 PM. Justin Maycock, present in Town Hall.
Susan Cooper, present in Town Hall. Also present remotely are, I'm gonna have to read those, Jeff Zimmerman?
Jeff Zimmerman, Mickey Jervis called in, and Melissa's on the line as well.
Okay.
So, item number one, consider approval of urgent request for American Rescue Plan Act funds. So, we met with the Finance Committee last evening. We are aware that we have a total of $276,190 allocated to Monterey. I believe we still only have half available to us at the moment. But we have until December 31, 2024, to allocate those funds, and they must be expended by December 31, 2026. We have received, I think we're up to six requests, depending on how you count, five or six, which we've discussed at a couple meetings. There are two that stand out because they are somewhat of an urgent or a time-sensitive nature. With the one being, the Southern Berkshire Ambulance is requesting an assessment of a portion of the funds to buy their new ambulance from Monterey. They're requesting from all the towns that they serve. And they're requesting $17,979 from us, and I believe that it's time-sensitive because they are open to purchase ambulance very soon. And then, the Fire Department had requested a new Rescue Five, and then found out that Southern Berkshire Ambulance was interested in selling a 2018 Ford Expedition that they were using as a fly car. So, and that is time-sensitive because Southern Berkshire Ambulance is trying to sell that vehicle. I think-
You want to do an order?
Yeah, so first things, the $17,979 for our portion of the Southern Berkshire Ambulance. I looked at the audit that was provided to us, and I'm not an accountant, so I didn't-
I mean, it appeared-
Couldn't make a ton of sense out of it, but it appeared that everything-
It appeared that the auditor felt that they had their books in order. That was what I could glean from it.
Yeah, they definitely-
It does seem, I seem to recall, there was a meeting before I was elected, but I was present at when the new, or is he called the Director? What is his title?
So Caleb Stone was the new Director, or President, or whatever the term may be. And I actually am of the understanding that now there is a new new beyond Caleb.
Okay.
A new, new person. But certainly, it seems like they've taken some steps in the right direction with billing. Trying to get, they're getting more of their money that they're billing. And, you know, I think just doing an audit itself shows a commitment to, you know, doing things the right way financially.
And, I mean, obviously, changing their process and policy about getting paid for the work that they do is a big deal, because that's their operating budget. We clearly are, we do rely on this ambulance service. They do service our town. And their equipment is old. I think everyone agreed, in fact, I believe that the Fire Chief told me that they've had problems when they were called out where they had no functioning vehicle.
Yes.
I think that it's a very reasonable use of the funds. I'm sure their ambulances got pummeled during COVID. I think all of the crews in Berkshire County did. So I would definitely be in favor of this.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to grant the request from the Southern Berkshire Ambulance Company for $17,979 towards Monterey's share of purchase of a new ambulance.
You'll second that motion? Any further discussion from the board? Any public comment?
There being none.
Can you hear us, Mickey?
Can anyone from that public comment on whether they can hear us?
I can hear you.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, there being no public comment or further discussion, I'll call a vote on the motion. Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, the motion carries to allocate those ARPA funds towards Southern Berkshire Ambulance, as the motion stated, $17,979. So that's the first time that this board has spent any of our ARPA funds. And now, we will consider the second request, which is the $55,000 requested by the Fire Department towards replacing Rescue Five with a 2018 Ford Expedition.
With approximately $10,000 on that, I believe.
Yeah.
I spoke to the Fire Chief a couple of hours ago, and one thing he said was that if it made it more palatable for us, he would be willing to throw in the money that they'd set aside for the repair of the current Rescue Five towards this, to bring down the amount, which I believe he said was $8,000.
Out of fiscal year 23's budget?
I don't know, I don't, he did not say-
That's gonna be Fire Company money, because he doesn't have anything left in this budget.
Well, my, my other concern would be that if it is town money, we have not allocated specific money towards this vehicle. So if it was like maintenance, in a maintenance account, I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to spend. If it's Fire Company money, I'm also not sure-
I think it might have been Fire Company money, but I don't, I'm not certain. And it wasn't in writing, so there's nothing I can check.
Yeah. So I did reach out to the Police Chief about the Cruiser 1270, which is one, the, a Cruiser that has already been replaced in the capital plan by the most recent Cruiser that we got, 1270 is a 2016 Explorer. And we have two Cruisers on the capital plan, and this is kind of an extra, like Rescue Five is an extra. So I asked whether or not it would be feasible to transition 1270, the Cruiser, to the Fire Department after Gareth retires in December 2022, and use 1260 and 1261 as the Police Cruisers. And Gareth got back to me this afternoon, and he said that "Over the years, I've taken special care of 1270 in order to be able to keep it as a spare for when we have a vehicle out of service. For example, several, several years ago, when our Cruiser was totaled, we had to rent a replacement Cruiser until a new one was available. This was a costly proposition with a rental rate of $150 a day and $4,500 down payment. With the present shortage of police vehicles, you could be waiting a long time for a replacement. I think it is imperative that we keep this mindset and hold on to this vehicle for the Police Department. Brian and I have also discussed the future plans of the Police Department, and the necessity of having one of our full-time officers being required to take this vehicle home to be on the call at night. The possibility also exists that we will have overlapping shifts, which would require a second vehicle. While I understand your interest in cost savings, I think this vehicle is better purposed for the Police Department. With the large number of unknown variables the Police Department will be dealing with in the future, I think the flexibility of having this Cruiser available is a no-brainer. Since an Explorer is considerably smaller than an Expedition, I believe the Expedition that Sean has suggestion suggested is better purpose for carrying all the equipment required at a scene by the Fire Department."
How, how many vehicles are there we have to repair? Two or three?
Three.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So we have 12-
That's what I thought, it's just something in there made me doubt my memory, but, okay.
So we have 1260 and 1261, and they're on a, I think it's a five-year replacement plan?
Okay.
My, my only, but I think significant concern with purchasing the Ford Expedition from Southern Berkshire Ambulance is the capital plan. And, and here's why. Because, you know, it certainly seems like Southern Berkshire Ambulance is a good organization to support a used vehicle that's ready to buy, is kind of hard to come by, has few miles, and a good setup for exactly what we're looking for. But it kind of contradicts the capital plan in a, in a few ways, where, you know, the Rescue Five vehicle is not on the capital plan. And so by getting a newer Rescue Five, to me, that effectively puts it on a replacement plan. I don't think there's really two ways about it. If you get a new vehicle, you're acknowledging that it's a vehicle that's useful or required in the fleet. And you can't then, when it, you know, when it comes to the end of its lifespan, not replace it, right?
Especially if they become dependent on it.
Yes.
That may already be true.
Yeah. And the other problem I have is with the Police Department. And look, I, I completely understand, and I sent my email to Gareth. Actually, the idea behind saving an older vehicle to beat up on in defense of driver training and to have as a replacement, I think there's a lot to be said for that. But we need, I think, then we need to amend our capital plan, maybe to reflect some of these occurrences. Not that you can always predict what used vehicle you want to hold on to and which one you don't. But if we really-
You can change your capital plan accordingly.
Yeah.
And we're at least have a discussion about so doing, for sure. I had this sense from the Finance Committee last night that, that they're sort of committing to a careful scrutiny revision of the capital plan, which I think is a great idea. I mean, I, I feel like Frank Abbott brings a lot of experience and skills, and will be able to approach that process from a place where, like, he's done a lot of capital plans. I feel like he's gonna ask a lot of really solid questions and engage the department heads in conversations that guide us through making perhaps even more solid revised capital plan. Did, did you have a similar sense?
Yeah, it does appear to me that, you know, they're gonna, well, we're actually gonna work on it jointly, the capital plan.
Right.
And my own, I, I think it seems like a good, good opportunity to purchase a new Rescue Five, but then it-
How do you feel about, I totally see your point, and Frank raised that same point to me in a conversation. My memory, if memory serves, in our conversation with the Chief last night, part of that discussion concerned the evolution of the Fire Department in this last few years as we're trying to transition to, to more paid rather than volunteer service, particularly because we're having such a hard time keeping enough people. And certainly, the towns that haven't made that transition are having trouble feeling even a single vehicle at times, which, that's a problem, right? So, as part of that weather related volunteerism is falling nationally, not just here. We, we can say we don't like the trend, but that won't fix it. And there is, you know, that horrible R-word of regionalization that nobody wants to discuss. But as we're transitioning from one system to another, it seems likely there are gonna be changes in that capital plan. And, and we're gonna need to, I mean, how often does one revisit a capital plan?
Good, I think, I would think kind of every year, maybe some years, you know, more thoroughly. But Melissa, do you have a comment, question?
I was just gonna say that originally Rescue Five wasn't on there because it's owned by the Fire Company, not the town. And that, that plan is evolving. I think Justin, I'm sorry, I think Sean mentioned last night that one of the things we're talking about is trying to do a mini-regionalization to have a staff member on during the day that would respond to especially medical calls in Rescue Five. And that was why this is a perfect opportunity for this vehicle.
So-
Okay, yeah, and understood. I think my concern being that usually when we make a change to the capital plan, it goes before it persists. Well, it happens with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and then it goes to Town Meeting.
Right.
Right? And we're kind of-
Short-circuiting that.
We kind of are, you know, to the extent that we purchase something with ARPA funds. And look, pretty much everything that's even-
May I make, ask a question?
Yeah, one second, Mickey. I'll call on you right after I'm done. I think all of the requests for ARPA funds that we've received, in one way or another, require, you know, future maintenance or future costs themselves. Maybe the playground being the least of which, because you kind of put it up and it just stays up there. But something like a pavilion at the community center, or if we do look into solar, and then we actually get solar, like, these are things that we spend ARPA money on, but then the town will be expected to maintain and fund these items. But this one seems like kind of the most significant, where we're purchasing something, and then it's going to be, you know, its lifespan, I don't know what you expect out of a vehicle these days, but probably something like 10 years maximum. It's already four years old.
Well, the last one lasted 19, so-
Yeah, well, and it wasn't, it wasn't, I don't believe it was with the Fire, I could be mistaken, but I don't believe it was with the Fire Department, all of those years. I could be wrong. I thought it-
Okay.
Mickey?
All right, so I've, listening from a distance, maybe I hear something that, in not hearing on the floor. I see that, and I think Melissa just said this, the Rescue Five that is on the floor now is a Fire Company vehicle. Therefore, and they want to use Fire Company money to put towards this new one. Therefore, this new one would be owned by the Fire Company, which is a private nonprofit, has nothing to do with the town. So this is not the Fire Department coming and asking for a vehicle, which would then go on the capital plan, but this would be, I'm gonna say privately owned by the Fire Company, they should have a different name, which is a nonprofit, and their vehicles would not be on the capital plan. And that's the way I see it.
No, I think, to the extent that we buy something, that the town buys something, we own it. We're not gonna donate it to a private nonprofit. If Rescue Five-
I mean, like, we're giving money to the nonprofit ambulance squad. So if we gave this $55,000 less $8,000, so that brings it down to something less, 47, 37.
I'd say 50 for around that.
47.
Well, and I don't, I don't know, I do get a little bit confused, because last year we ran into, if we bought it and the town owned it, that'd be pretty simple. Last year, we did run into the anti-aid amendment with donating to nonprofits. And of course, the exception being, we get a specific service from Southern Berkshire Ambulance and the Fire Company. But I also don't know the extent to which we're allowed to ask for donations.
What was the anti-aid thing?
Well, the anti-aid amendment says basically that the town cannot donate to nonprofits. But there is an exception, basically when a service is provided in return.
Like the Fire Department.
Yeah, if we had any specific question on it, we want, want to, of course, consult the attorney, the attorneys. But I know last year, among other things, when the Conservation Commission voted to designate funds to restore trails on Monterey Preservation Land Trust property, one of the things that the attorney said it couldn't go through is that the town can't make a donation to a nonprofit. And then I'm also aware that when the library trustees voted to donate, I think it was like $25 or $50 to-
To $25.
$25. Well, Mickey, can you explain that one, because I might be fuzzy on the details.
Yeah, yeah, we were told that the money couldn't come, even though we wanted to take it out of an account that is all by donations to the, it's the memorial fund, and that's funds that have been given to the library for whatever. And, and they're kind of free money. And we've always before taken this $25 and given it to the Legislative Breakfast every year. And this year, we were told, no, you can't do that. Because it's, it, there's no service, no, nothing, you're not getting anything in return, I think that was it. But I, I think that this ARPA money is, might be different. I think it's a little more of an, I have the feeling that it's a little more open. In other words, it, it's not as tightly held. And it would be something to, first of all, make sure that I've got this correct, check with Sean, and then check with the attorney to see if that would be legally feasible. Because then that, we could get this vehicle, and it would not be on the capital plan, because it is not owned by the Fire Department. We're not buying it, we're just giving ARPA funds to it.
I did have the impression that this, that we were buying it, Mickey, just, I, I'm, do you have the same impression?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be wise for the town. I, the Southern Berkshire Ambulance thing is a little bit different. We're, we are, you know, making up 17 or 18,000 dollars out of 250,000 dollars towards the ambulance. We don't own it. This, we would be paying 100% or not close to 100%. So I feel like, or 80 to 90%. I feel like if the town does buy it, then the town should own it. But my, like I said, my, my only, and my only concern was the extent to which it then becomes an item on the capital plan and ends up on the Town Meeting budget in eight years, or 10 years, or 15 years. And, you know, we're asking the, the voters to replace a vehicle that they never even agreed to have on the capital plan.
Right. It's certain, but your point earlier does come back now, because you're right that a lot of the, I mean, perhaps not the playground, although there's some maintenance of that too, but I guess we're already doing that kind of maintenance. But certainly, the pavilion for the community center would also have maintenance and upkeep.
Yeah.
And would become part of the capital plan at the same time. And, and in fact, any, you know, if we spent money, ARPA money to do anything to this building, this building has maintenance, of course, that's already on the capital plan, presumably, or should be. But it would be a shame to lose an opportunity. I mean, sometimes something's not on the capital plan because you didn't plan for it. But if an opportunity comes up, it's, it would be a shame to not go forward with it if it's an otherwise good choice, just because you hadn't already planned for it. But I totally see your point, like, indeed, this vehicle wasn't on the capital plan. So in a way, it's a, it's an addition to the fleet, I guess.
Melissa?
Right now, all of the requests are on the capital plan, and we do have requests on the capital plan that have been ignored for several years. I would also ask you to remember that with the highway trucks, the most recent three, at least two of the ones we bought, the M2s, those weren't on the capital plan either, because it's evolving, and the Superintendent at the time had a different vision for where the department was going. So they were added, you know, later. And I think that the plan is always evolving, based on, on the needs of the town, and, and we have new needs and more calls. And like I said, with this mini-regionalization thing that we're looking into, this would be an ideal vehicle. It's already all set up.
So, and I, I totally agree that the capital plan's always changing, and that's why Susan said, how often is the capital plan reviewed? I really think every year, to some, you know-
Might be desirable, but that doesn't mean it's happened.
Yeah, but you really should be reviewing it every year. The difference here, of course, and the big difference is that when we change our mind and got the M2 trucks, or we got, you know, you put a new vehicle on, we, it goes before the Finance Committee and the Select Board, and it gets put on the Town Meeting warrant, and there's a Town Meeting vote.
Right.
Right? And we are bypassing those processes. And I don't think that it's fair to say that this is something that's been unforeseen at the time of our last budget process, or the one before that. Because frankly, you know, we received the first request for this back in, before this year's Town Meeting, in April. So, I think that is, I think that is my concern here, is that, yes, the capital plan evolves, but in this case, it is not being done through the process through which the capital plan normally evolves. Nor is it something that's generally, you know, out for the public. Like a playground is out for the public, or a community center is out for the public. If we start doing things, and yes, they all benefit, a better Town Hall benefits the public who comes in and the employees who serve the public. But, you know, I'm, I'm wary of spending a lot of ARPA funds on-
I think that if it was a 20 grand ticket, we'd have less reservation.
Yeah.
Because it is like a fifth of the total pool, close. Ellen, has her hand up?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ellen.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I understand, I understand the, the concern about the capital plan. But I'd, I'd like to point out that this, the town itself, Monterey, has a preponderance of older people, and this is a health and safety issue. And from what I gathered at the last meeting, when she, when the Chief was talking about the options, if we didn't get this purchase, which kind of came unexpectedly, but as he seemed to think, as he actually stated strongly, was a very appealing option for us now, then we would have a vehicle that needs a great number of repairs. He said it wasn't even start all the time. We'd then have to be worrying about getting all of those repairs done, or if it wasn't going to survive, this vehicle wasn't going to survive, then there was going to be a question of the availability of a new one. Correct me if I'm wrong, these are the memories that I have of that meeting. I left that meeting feeling concerned.
The one piece that you may have missed, the one piece you may have missed is that that vehicle actually belongs to the Fire Department, went to the Fire House?
Company.
The Fire Company.
I don't know that for sure, I don't know who said that, and I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying, I'm, that's not-
We apparently don't, we believe that, that the town doesn't own that vehicle, that the Fire Company owns the vehicle. So this would be a change that, that would now, Melissa said I'm correct? It means that it would now belong to the town instead of to the Fire Company, if we got a new vehicle with ARPA funds. So it is a change. Here's a question.
I, I don't, I'm just, I'm just thinking from a practical standpoint. I'm just asking about it from a practical standpoint, that if you didn't purchase this vehicle, where would we be as a community with a fair number of older people who may need these services going forward? And, and as far as taxpayers feeling down the road that they didn't have a, a say about this, nobody can say for sure what the taxpayers would say, but if there's any issue that the taxpayers in this town would care most about, I would think it would be health and safety. That's what I wanted to say.
So, and just to respond to your point, Ellen, too, there is the Rescue Nine Medical- So, and just to respond to your point, Ellen, too, there is the Rescue Nine medical vehicle, which the town purchased in 2013 and is up for its estimated ten years in fiscal year twenty-four. And that's a quarter of a million dollars on the capital plan. So there's no, there would be no lack of med, of medical vehicle. Uh, it's not like, you know, people are going to go without a medical response to their home.
It does raise a question, though. So if we turn this down, what happens? He, the, Sean puts out some money to try to get that vehicle repaired, to the tune of like eight or ten grand, but it's not town money, it's fire company money? And I, I, you know, I'm at a, like, I'm not a car person. So I, to me, I think, wow, it has so few miles on it, but I guess there are lots of things that can fail just from age, like hoses, brake lines, et cetera, or from wear and tear from rocks going on the roads out here. Um, what, do you, I mean, maybe, I suspect you know more about cars than I do.
Yeah.
Um, what is a reasonable expectation of that vehicle's ability to function the way they seem to be utilizing it now to have fewer personal vehicles and to allow the on-call duty officer, is that the right term?
Mm-hmm.
Um, to go immediately from their home to a call when there is one? And I think he estimated approximately one a week, that that happens?
I forget, I forget. Um, I see your hand, Jeff, I'll call on you in a, in a second. Um, I'm all, you know, none of us are mechanical experts, sitting here, right? Um, I think, you know, like he, he had said, their initial plan was just to run Rescue Five out till, till it wore out, and then it fit into this new model, as you explained it pretty well. Um, I think if this concern is being raised to us, that there's a vehicle that's necessary in the fleet, and it is being, and it's not, and it's falling apart, I don't think that we should disregard this concern. Whether or not this purchase is the solution, I think is a different, is a different question. To me, I think, although it doesn't seem to be ideal for the police department or the fire department, it seems, it makes a lot of common sense to transition an, an extra Ford SUV from 2016 that we already own as a town into a fire response vehicle. And yes, as Garrett noted, it will put more wear and tear on the other vehicles. If those other vehicles go out of service, you know.
We're short a vehicle.
We're, we're, we could be short a vehicle. I mean, that's a risk that you always run to some degree. Um, but.
There's also the issue that the vehicle wouldn't even be available until the end of December, when the chief retires. But that would mean in, like, um, that the fire company might have to put eight to ten grand into the existing Rescue Five just to get it to last and be safe in those remaining six months.
And, well, also my.
It sort of seems like a waste of money.
My sense was that it was going to be fire department money, because you said July, starting in July one, which I think that's, you know, the town budget fiscal year. So it seemed to me that it's going to be fire department money, but.
Either, either way, I, I'd hate, you know, there's nothing worse than spending ten grand to fix a car you're gonna get rid of.
Yeah.
Um, like, I, you'd rather not, but I don't know that it's safe for him to drive. Jeff did have his hand up, though.
Thank you, everybody, and it's just a pleasure to watch the work being done by the Select Board at this point. So thank you both for, for that. Um, and I've missed a number of meetings for one reason or another, but I'm glad to be here tonight. And I'm not trying to ask a question that's gonna sound like it's completely unrelated to the topic at hand, but it is related from the standpoint of we're talking about, from my perspective, a rather large sum of money to invest. And I'm kind of riffing off Ellen's comment about health and safety. And it made me, when you said that, Ellen, it made me think about the culvert. And whether or not, um, some, we should also be thinking about what other options, and maybe this has been done already, and I apologize for that if I'm late to the party, so to speak. But I often think of twenty-three as the main east-west road, and what happens if the culvert goes when we're already ten years overdue, from what I understand? And whether or not these deliberations need to expand out in turn, and maybe there are other plans for that, but whether or not we need to expand our consideration of the, these vehicles for other health and safety concerns as well. And I don't, I'm not saying one outweighs the other, but from a process standpoint, to make sure that we're not just thinking within the box, but we're also thinking around the outside of the box, so that we're clear that we don't wind up in a situation later where we say, oh gee, I wish we hadn't spent, and I wish we hadn't spent the money on a new car when I need a pacemaker. Um, so I just wanted to make sure we're, we're able to think about this large sum of money with regard to other potential expenses we might have on the horizon.
That does, this is, it's not relevant specifically to this vehicle, but it does raise a question. If we wanted to use any of the ARPA money for the culvert, my reading of the KP thing is that we could do so because it has to do with stormwater runoff. Um, I think that was a pretty clear decision in there. But my question would be, A, um, we have to use it within a certain time period, and I don't think we're gonna get to fixing the culvert in that time period, and which way you cut it, because we're in the process of doing the second round of design things. And B, if we did want to use it in some way, who in the town would be the one that was applying for the monies for that?
Well, and actually, you know, ARPA funds, we, the Select Board doesn't need to respond to applications.
Right.
We can spend ARPA funds however we want.
I see, okay.
I think the idea behind we're requesting, you know, ideas, doing a survey, requesting ideas, is that, um, it's something, you know, to fill out what the needs and desires are of the town and the townspeople.
I didn't mean to get us off the topic or anything, but it, it did make me think of that, and I had been thinking, I, I know I was thinking about the culvert when I was reading through the KP law rules about what we could spend it on.
And, I mean, that, the culvert, you know, when and if it's done is going to be, to my understanding, millions of dollars. So hopefully, you know, the town would seek, you know, joint funding with, with a state or federal program, because that's too large, you know, obviously.
And it is a state road.
Is it not? I know that there was an argument over whether or not it should be a state road back fifty, back a long time ago, but I thought it had avoided being a state road.
Huh.
So that it would be rerouted. I mean, it's a numbered route, but I believe in Monterey, it's not a state road. You know, the state doesn't take care of it, but. Melissa?
Would it be reasonable to ask that you guys wait until next week so that Sean can attend the meeting, since there seems to be a lot of unanswered questions that I think he could answer better? I, I'm talking to him here, and I'm not sure that that money he talked to you, Susan, about is fire company money or not, and I would want to be sure on that before.
I know he's at his kid's graduation tonight, so.
Right.
Why is he not here?
Well, and I don't, I don't think, I don't want to rush.
The decision.
The decision.
We don't want to lose the opportunity.
I, I would say that I'm still, I am conflicted myself because it seems like it's going to Southern Berkshire Ambulance, which is a good thing. It, it replaces a vehicle that is twenty years old. You don't have twenty-year-old vehicles anymore. My six-year-old truck is, is, is rusted out to where it's not gonna pass inspection in a few years. Um, and it seems like the right deal at the right time. My only.
I hate us to lose that deal because it is a good deal.
Yeah. My only concern, Melissa, would, would dealing with this at next week's meeting lose us?
The opportunity.
Lose us the opportunity from Southern Berkshire Ambulance?
It might. I'm, I've asked Sean to reach out to them, but it doesn't sound like you're gonna approve it tonight. I think, you know, explaining to them that you have some questions and sending them all to Sean beforehand so we can get you all the information would be better than just outright denying the request.
Yeah. So what, how, how about we do this? I will reach out to Southern Berkshire Ambulance on behalf of the Select Board and let them know that we are, we are thoroughly considering purchasing the 2018 Expedition for Monterey, and we are, uh, trying to get some of the details on our end straightened out and figured out, and if they could, you know, be, understand that we are interested and not move on. Um, and we can also tell them that we did give them the money for their ambulance.
Right.
So that should be good news.
Right, that should be good news. I, and I totally understand your conflict, and, um, you know, if this was a, a tenth or a twentieth of the total amount, it would be different, but it's hard to make these decisions when it's a big piece of the money that's there. And I, on the, one hand, I think it's an awfully good deal that would be hard to come by again. Um, and if we, if we did have to make a decision sooner than next week, I would be willing to figure out a way to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to meet on Tuesday, probably.
Yeah, which isn't much.
It's a three-day weekend, so.
Right, right.
Um, I, Ellen, do you have a comment?
Go ahead, Ellen.
I just, I'm, I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned because I thought that Sean said last week that another town was waiting in the wings and had been told that we would get first dibs in one week and that we had to decide tonight. So I'm confused now. Um, if, if you don't decide tonight, you're just gonna ask them to wait, but what if, what if they say, no, we already told, what was another town, I forget the name of it, waiting for that vehicle, wasn't that right?
I don't remember.
I don't.
Another town.
I don't recall saying that another town was waiting. I remember Sean saying that they would like to know from us as soon as possible whether or not we'd like it, so that we could, they could move forward if not. But we are also going to give them the news that we are, you know, funding our portion of the ambulance. So I feel like that's a pretty, you know, we, as long as we maintain a good, good relationship with them. I'm not worried, you know, municipal, we, sometimes we get, get caught up. I certainly have in my first year on the board, of thinking that things move quickly and some things do, but, you know, a lot of Select Boards meet every other week. So things don't, uh, I think one of the advantages of meeting every week is sometimes it allows you the opportunity to come back next week. Um, certainly, we should know if a portion of this is gonna be covered by the fire company or fire department, so that we can know how much to allocate. And we should know.
I understand, that, that makes good sense. That makes good sense. I wonder if Melissa.
We should know whether the fire department or fire company is going to own it. It's my understanding it's the fire department, but that's worth consideration.
Right. I mean, we could make that determination. We could say, we'll buy it, but we own it.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah. Or maybe we don't want to own it for whatever reason.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, but I don't know how that affects insurance and stuff. Um, at the very least.
Do you think, do you think Melissa, do you think Melissa could text Sean right now and ask him if there was another town that had been told, because that's my recollection from what Sean said, at another town.
I believe that she has.
Had expressed interest and had been told they'd have to wait until tonight when we decided. I just, I would love to hear that reassurance from Sean that that is, that, that that's not a concern.
He, he's out to dinner with his family for his son's graduation. So he may not be reachable.
And I will, Ellen, I will come back to this agenda item before the end of the meeting to hear if there are any updates.
Oh, I see.
I think the time being, we should keep moving. We will return.
Okay.
If there is no objection, I will reach out to Southern Berkshire Ambulance personally and ask them, and, and let them know that we have allocated the ARPA funds that they requested for the ambulance, and let them know that we are thoroughly considering the 2018 Expedition, and, uh, we're finalizing details and figuring out how it will be paid for, and we'll, we will be back to the next.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Um.
What's next on here?
So discuss.
The general.
Plan for deadlines and disbursements of American Rescue Plan Act funds.
So I was, I, I just had to, like, come up with a date, but I'm thinking, what if we said, I mean, this would be about half of the half, but that we would consider having a deadline in November for the first batch of.
Mm-hmm. So are we saying that we would use the first half of the, or designate the first half of the funds after that date in November?
That, that's what I'm throwing out there. It's awkward because the number might not be the right amount, but, um, one, so one possibility I thought of is having two different deadlines, one this year and one next year. Um, I, I mean, I'm, it's just an idea, I'm not committed to it. My thought being, I said November so that it would be a while after the third Select Board is, member is elected, so that that person could participate. Um, I, I agree with you. I'm fine with anybody that wants to come in and talk to us about an idea, coming in, whether or not they have a piece of paper in their hand, um, or getting feedback from us before that deadline. That is not a problem for me at all. Um, but I think with a real deadline, and actually, um, I think that Michelle's suggestion to have a, a form with some questions to help guide people through the thought process is a good one.
Yeah.
Um, I meant to work on that, but spent four hours on the phone with Verizon today, so that didn't happen. So I'm happy to give you an update on that.
Yeah.
Um, what are your thoughts?
So I think November is fair. I think we should think about whether we want it to be half of the funds or all of the funds. In some ways, you know, based on even the requests we, we, we've received so far.
Right. It could be the whole.
It could really be the, the whole funds, especially we've, as of tonight, we've used the first bit, which is a small bit, but it turns us from two seventy-six roughly to two fifty, or two.
Sixty.
Two sixty. Math's off tonight. Um, if next week we spend fifty-five more, now we're down to two oh five.
Right.
So. It, uh.
I mean, we could look at those proposals and say that there are some we don't approve of, and if there's unspent money, we'll ask for more proposals, or.
Yeah.
Or we also have the opportunity as a Select Board to say that we know that there are these needs in town, and we think the ARPA funds should be, like, we don't, they don't all have to be from the public.
Yeah.
It could be from us.
So how about this? We should, why don't we work on a application form?
Okay.
With.
I'm willing to.
With some, with some guiding questions. Of course, the more information that applicants can give to us, the better. Um, but some general questions to guide them in the right direction, I think would be good. Meanwhile, we can also discuss, uh, timeline, but why, should we continue, should we come back to this next week with a draft application form?
That sounds like a good plan, and, um, and maybe I'll see if I can pick a date in November, I don't know.
Melissa?
Michelle did create a draft one, which I'll send to you, which maybe you can start with and edit from there.
I have it already. She sent it to us, too.
Okay.
And then I think we might also, even if we don't ask specific questions, we can say, these are some of the criteria we're going to be. we can say these are some of the criteria we're going to be evaluating applications on and guide people in that direction, even if they don't have to, you know, do short answer questions for, you know, every single little thing. Um. Because some, you know, frankly, some of the applications we've received so far have been in some detail about the plans and to varying degrees, but certainly one thing that we need to consider is what kind of um commitment is this to what financial obligationist is this to the town going forward? Um, you know, it's like a a gift to the town, but then if it ends up costing it's not like that should provide a gift.
Right.
Stop us because almost anything in some way or another is gonna require money in the future depend, but it we can consider that.
I mean, it's something we have to be aware of because it does mean at the very least we need to budget for it.
Yeah.
Right? So it it's a reasonable thing to ask.
So what we'll come back to the application form and a timeline next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Letter to Town Clerk following up June one discussion about mediation. I made some edits. I can if you don't have it with you, I can just read it.
I have it, but I don't have your edited one. I don't I don't I don't think. Why don't you go ahead and read it?
It reads, Ms. Walker, as part of our ongoing effort to improve working conditions in town hall, the select board offered to engage
Mediation?
A mediator to help improve the working relationship between the town administrator and the town clerk. You were present at the select board meeting on June one, twenty twenty-two, and you declined to participate in mediation and advise the board to speak only with your counsel regarding this matter. We hope that you will continue to think about and share with us any ideas that you have about how to make the town hall a comfortable and positive working environment for all employees. Um, so I think I changed the that to like a you tense because I felt it was.
Plus, and and there's that additional paragraph.
Yes, and then I added the paragraph and maybe some other minor changes.
Yeah.
But if.
Which I I think it's fine.
Okay, so I would motion to approve this letter. Oh, you know what I should also do is change the date before we. To June fifteen. Uh I would motion to approve this memo as as uh.
In addition to.
Written here.
Yep, as written there. Sounds good. Second.
Any discussion or public comment? There be none, I'll call a vote, Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion of the chair, memo is approved. We will sign that later. Okay, moving on. Review policy for contacting town council.
Contacting town council. Finally got organized and put everything on the dock. Since there's no written documents, but.
So we have Steve and I approved a council contact policy.
That basically says it's the upshot of this, as I understand it, having read it now four times, is that you're the lead contact and that you're the only contact, correct?
More or less, and I think one thing that we ought to do is uh institute the form that um.
You talked about.
That me Talon talked about.
Okay.
Right? And because recently I was at the park commission meeting. I just happened to be in town hall and I walked in and they said, we want to contact town council. How do we do that? And I said, write to the select board. So you may have seen that.
It it's actually on on my list of letters to them.
Yeah.
Right.
So um Tracy Brennan of the Park Commission asked, you know, speak with town council, which is exactly how it's supposed to work. I think if we were to revamp this policy, one thing I think it could be is less wordy because it it goes into, I think it it's very dense.
It it is. The only other thing I think might be appropriate is that I think it might be appropriate for the town administrator to actually be able to contact council.
Yeah.
I don't know, like it's hard for me to say that it's one hundred percent necessary.
Yeah.
Um, at the same time, I feel like um it from a an efficiency standpoint, it may sometimes make sense.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, if you're not comfortable with that, maybe we can leave it that she asked us and we agreed. The only downside to that is that it may sometimes not be able to wait a week or if we go back to biweekly meetings, that would be awkward.
Yeah.
Um, we can't jointly agree if we've not in meeting.
Yeah, and so one way that this policy deals with that issue, um not specifically with town administrator, specifically with anybody, but for time sensitive or confidential matters, this policy off authorizes the chair, whoever the chair of the select board is at that time.
Right.
To.
To go ahead and.
To authorize.
Inform.
The contact.
Right, okay.
And then depending, I think we need to get in a little bit of a routine. Certainly, I mean, KP said one of the reasons and we adopted this policy. I see your hand, Jeff, and I'll call on you in a minute. Um, we adopt this policy under KP and one of the reasons, I don't wanna get into why they left or why they didn't leave, but they said we weren't following your council contact policy. And Donna Brewer is now charging hourly, so I don't think she'll leave for those same reasons. But we will get large bills.
Right.
Uh depending on how the policy is or is not followed, but I think we need to get in a routine um where if anyone, I mean, even if right, even if I want to discuss a matter of substance with uh town council, I would bring it to the board unless it's time sensitive or confidential, in which case I would let the board know at our next meeting that I have done so. Um, but actually, the person it hurts more than anybody is really the other board members. Um, now, I never thought about it until now, but you are the one or other board members are the one person or people that uh can't.
Directly contact.
Can't directly contact council. Now, if it was really time sensitive or confidential and for some reason, you know, but you can't consult with the chair, I think, you know, I guess we'll have to also fill out how the invoices are. Um, I I don't think we're gonna be well on your budget.
So um, so essentially, if Melissa needs to contact council about something and it's between meetings, she can reach out to you and you can give her approval and then let me know the next week?
Any any employee.
Any employee.
Uh, I mean, I think.
Department head will have it.
The town administrator certainly would have more reason to.
That do I only used her because that was the one that seemed to me might happen to the most often.
And if I had anything confidential or time sensitive, really more time sensitive, if I had anything time sensitive to reach out to council about, I would also let the board know at the next meeting, right? And it prevents.
Right.
Because we operate as a board and just we I the way that I think about it, we should delegate only power outside of meetings that's necessary. So I think eh or efficient or useful in some way, so like all of the responses to the phone issue are gonna be go to you, and I know that's very different. But to the extent which we can do things as a board, I think that, I mean, we really are a board.
And I think whenever we do delegate, it's important for the information to flow back.
Yeah.
Right? Like and um that that is something I I did wanna bring up because I wanna make sure I can regularly keep you updated.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we have to put things, we have to put it on the agenda every time.
Yeah.
Um, so I and so I, for example, I did spend four hours on the phone with Verizon today. Um, and I do wanna give you keep you updated about it. Um, so that when there are ongoing issues, is it something that's gonna have to perpetually be put on the agenda every time or?
My so my understanding of the open meeting law is it's very important to put things on the agenda, especially if it did uh decision, you know, with consequences is going to be needed really, or, you know, public input is really helpful. And every topic that we anticipate should be put on the agenda.
Um, but I didn't anticipate this because it happened this morning.
Yeah, so that's that's fine, you know, unanticipated topics. I think occasionally there will be a topic that's unanticipated, but uh we feel like.
Right, so there's no decision that would have to be made. It's purely need to generate information about what's happening.
Yeah.
And and there's nothing really that we would have to decide to do.
All right.
Um, so you're feeling like we should, if we can make it less wordy, that would be good.
I would be happy to take a stab at that if we want, but I don't know that I could do it for next week. I could do it for.
Essentially.
Couple weeks from now.
But if the content isn't really being changed, I don't think that's pressing.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that if a department head or the town administrator does need to contact council, it it shouldn't be too hard for them to do that.
Absolutely not.
Um, so that that was my only real concern. Um, I, you know, I do have a couple of matters that I think may require um council input. One of them was the one you just mentioned about the parks commission, but another one concerns um our upcoming appointments.
Yeah.
Um, so that's not on the agenda for today.
Well, we actually do have appointments.
Oh, isn't it?
But I do, I wanna get to, we will get, that's the last item of new business, but we have.
Okay.
But Jeff, did you have something to say?
Yes, um very quickly, this may be incorporated already into the language that you have. I do happen to agree that less is more when it comes to policies and had not being dense, but the thought I had as you were talking about it was I was concerned about the eventuality where, let's say, there was some type of emergency and the the chair of the select board, whether it's you, Justin, or somebody five years from now or longer uh can't be reached. And maybe because they're infirmed or they're away or whatever the reason is. Um, there probably should be language that says that in that case, the next most senior person on the select board um can reach out to council. Um, I don't I don't like policy, generally, I don't like policies that say only one person can and nobody else can't under any other circumstance. So uh something you might wanna consider as you're writing it then.
I think it's in here.
Yeah, um Jeff, your question is answered in a couple of different ways, maybe not as directly as you put it. But it says, if the chair of the select board must recuse himself on a matter due to conflict of interest, the alternate chair shall act as liaison to town council for that matter. If the chair fails to fulfill the responsibilities laid out in this policy or if the chair uh does not authorize a confidential or time sensitive request for access to council, the requestor of access to council shall have the ability to make an appeal to the entire select board about the matter. So I think it it brings up the idea that, you know, sometimes the chair of the select board, for whatever reason, uh may not be available and then the alternate chair uh should step in.
Um, but if we maybe if we're revising it, putting specifically in there that should the should the chair not be available?
Yeah.
For any reason, um the alter what was it called, the alternate chair or whatever, um could be approached.
Yeah. I if if.
Good point. Thank you, Jeff.
This has been something that I have wanted to work on in short, so.
Yeah, okay.
I will, but not not immediately. Um, review policy for agenda posting requirements. So. Um.
What's the issue?
Melissa informed me that she's training some of the uh board chairs to post their own agendas.
Okay.
Which I think is good. Um, just to have some way, I don't think that employees should be required to work during time off. Um, but I also don't think that uh I think that we should have some redundancy in in posting agendas.
I I I would like to actually see us have redundancy for lots of things.
Yeah.
If as possible, and I I is that actually on this? Um, one of the I just wanted to let you know that one of the things I have actively been doing is talking to all the departments about redundancy.
Yeah.
Um, and you know, about backup in the event that someone is for any reason either on vacation or injured or what have you, that critical job posts are covered. Um, so I would love to get that on the next agenda so I can relate to you all this stuff I found out because it's not on this agenda.
Okay, and we will also need to post next week's agenda by Friday at the latest.
Okay.
So tonight or tomorrow, let's uh discuss.
Talk about agenda items, right.
So and I guess I don't really have any changes to that other than I'll work with Melissa and see, you know, how we can reflect that in the policy that some boards are getting access to post their own agendas and or how we can, you know, make it so that agendas can be posted when the town administrator is off and it doesn't require employees who are off to have to work while they're off.
I I totally agree. Um, and getting other people to be fluent in posting agendas is always desirable. And there really isn't a reason why the other chairs of boards can't be posting agendas.
I think the one concern, and I think it's valid, is that.
Consistency.
If if we're not trained well, I have noticed that one board and it's legal because it's still on the website, at least in my understanding, but whenever they post their agendas and I because I think they're the one one of the ones who do post their own agendas, they post it to the calendar. Um, and if you click on the calendar link, it brings you to say, you know, there is a meeting, but you have to go to their page.
On their calendar.
To their page to see and click on their agenda and then you get the PDF of their agenda.
Okay.
So when Melissa has done it, it has typically been a bit more seamless where if you click on a calendar link, it brings you to the agenda and everything's all.
It's easier to access for the public, for sure.
But if we can, I guess, train board chairs in a way that uh, you know, they are able to post them as well as Melissa does, then.
And it's gonna have consistency.
Yeah.
So that you know, no matter what board, if you click there on their page, you will get it, right? Like the more consistency makes it easier once somebody knows how to navigate the system.
So I think we're we're kind of working on that in a couple of different uh manners, but uh I have nothing to change about that that policy. Uh next agenda item, review time off request policy, employees seeking to make up time.
So, um, is the what has been the policy in the past about this? I had understood that in general, and this may be totally wrong, that in general, a part-time employee does not typically make up the time. Is that incorrect?
So I guess it depends on what department in some instances. Um, for example, it came up last year that a couple of holidays fell unfortunately on like a Christmas Eve Saturday, Christmas on Sunday, New Year's Eve Saturday, New Year's on Sunday. And the transfer station attendant said, okay, now we can't work and we can't make up the time and now we just don't get paid.
Well, also, there's no access to the transfer station for the public.
Yeah, I think I I wanna say they opened. They definitely opened at least once on those weekends, I think, maybe on the eve days.
Right.
Um, but it is a question. I think it should be consistent across the board. Um, I hope that the new shared HR manager, I don't wanna, you know, think that they will solve all of these. Problems, but hopefully this is something that we can, I imagine, will meet them uh and be able to share our concerns, and I think that if we can build a list, this is definitely up on the list because it it came up last year. And look, sometimes people are there's a holiday and they the the town hall and the transfer and everything shut down. And then sometimes they're going on vacation and sometimes they're sick. And is it the same for all three of those or is it different? Um, I remember last year when we discussed this, um, there's a a couple part-time employees, namely the transfer station attendants and the library staff who are not the director who only work when, you know, the library or the transfer station is open behind the desk or at the transfer station. And when there's a holiday or something, there's no opportunity to make up hours.
Right.
Um.
Well, there was because we didn't we open the transfer station a different day?
So usually I believe when we've had a Sunday holiday, it will open on Monday. But we've had some of these double whammies where you get a Saturday, Sunday kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it's certainly something that needs to be figured out with the new HR director. Unfortunately, at a certain point, um.
There's a limit to what we can do, even even with a new policy, I'll agree.
And also, I don't want to get involved in any thing that would relate to the financial status of my own parents, who are both part-time employees, so I have to recuse myself.
So it would be better to address that policy more fully when we have another board member, but it still needs to be. I there must be a way other towns handle it. I'm sure that we may have, we may be able to borrow procedure from somewhere else, even if we wanna tweak it to suit ourselves. Um, but understood. Um, it comes up at this moment particularly because. Um, but understood, um, it comes up at this moment particularly because the town clerk, um, who is a part-time employee. Is going on vacation and is asked to make up hours. Um, and I I I personally do not have a problem with made up hours, particularly for critical job functions. My request of her was to provide potential hours, because what I do think is important is if you're not gonna be open. It should be clear when you will be available instead, so my problem is primarily with discretionary hours.
Yeah.
I feel like they should be posted, real hours that get capped.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, I do have this email from her, I think she sent it to you also. Um, giving a list of days where she could work, although no hours are given there. Um, do you have any thoughts of which days would be the best ones? For to work instead of the days you will miss while on vacation?
No, no, I didn't, I don't, I think I got that email, but I didn't.
You don't. And I I get confused too, because I thought that she was gonna be gone that weekend, because I thought she was off. Because she was going away the twenty-third, the twenty-fourth, and I assumed the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. So I'm a little confused about why those are showing up on there now, but. I'm not sure, I I can't always access my email on here, so I pulled everything up before I came.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, unfortunately, you know, this is something that really should have some consistency. Um, behind it.
You mean changing her hour, uh, the the policy or the hours?
Well, I mean, people do take time, Mickey, are you trying to speak? Mickey?
Nope, nope, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
I just, I just coughed, sorry about that.
Okay. Alright, no worries, I just wondered, um. Yeah, I mean, like, I guess it needs to be dealt with in a, in a clear policy, and.
Sure, but meanwhile, we have someone who is going on vacation on the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
We will lose those hours, we can't really wait till August.
No, understood.
To make a decision about that.
The twenty-third and twenty-fourth, or Thursday and Friday, so which.
Right, and so it's confusing to me, because if they're going to the Cape. How would she be available? Like, she's coming back on on Friday night or something, like, I guess it, this is the day she gave us, but. Um, I'm not really sure that I I I think that Sunday might be an odd day to have those hours, I'd be happier with. Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of the following week.
Yeah.
She's already working Thursdays, so that doesn't.
I, yeah, I have no opposition to you replying and saying that. Um. May, you know, if she'd like to make those hours off, could she please post hours on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, what she said, she said that she is available for?
Okay. Um. Uh, and to the point of, I we, I guess we should put it on, uh, your agenda, but as far as coverage goes, but she also alludes to this. Uh, my staff is quite capable of covering for me.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. I did, um, I had received differing reports, I actually asked her in a previous email. If it was possible for her staff to cover for her, and she initially responded. That he was no longer her assistant, and that he couldn't cover her, and. I I'm happy to send you that email if she didn't send it to you also. Um, however, I called Mr. Shaw and had a long conversation with him, because I do feel like it's appropriate, like, we now have. An assistant for Melissa, so there's coverage, there will be soon, coverage for her. Um, I've talked, I know that we have, you know, the treasurer is a firm, so there's backup for that. I had a long conversation with the assessor about his backup, which he has a, a big and extensive plan for. Um, including the firm that has given him backup, and he is actively training the board of assessors, although they don't. They themselves apparently don't feel like they're completely up to the task, but he has said that the firm that he works with. Could fill in if anything were to happen to him, which gave me a lot of reassurance, because it's a very big job.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't yet heard back from Mari, I did also talk to the, to the chief. And they had a pretty clear plan, not surprisingly. Um, but Mr. Shaw said that he would in fact be willing to. Train to be formerly the assistant clerk and to get whatever certification would be required. Um, his stipulation was that he would not, he would like to be paid more than minimum wage for that. Um, I have not yet received, but I did ask him for it, and he did say he would submit. Um, something that said what he would need, uh, to do to finalize that training. Um, to be a qualified assistant clerk, or whatever that requires, um, including. Whatever testing, whatever money it would cost the town to pay for his training or what have you. So, um, I would, and first thing I asked was, is he willing to serve in that capacity, and he said he would be as long as. It wasn't for minimum wage, which I can quite understand, given the amount of training that's required to do the job.
Yeah, and he had actually told the board last year that he would, I think he even gave us a resume.
Okay.
At one point, and. I can't remember what came of it, I think it got lost in the.
In the shuffle.
In the shuffle.
Okay.
Um, so this is not the first time.
Okay.
But it was a HR director coming and job descriptions. And, you know, I think now is as good a time as ever to have that.
Collect it all and have it ready to go.
Yeah.
Alright, sounds good.
And it's good to know, you know, that Gary would be willing to do that.
Um, yeah, I I felt that way too, um, but, and it makes me feel very good to know that so many people do have backup. Um, I, Mari Maywell too, I just haven't heard back from her, she was the last one I contacted, so it's not like it's been a long time.
Yeah. And that's also an elected position, so there's only so much that we can do.
Right, but we tend at least to inquire as to whether there is one, right, I mean.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, there's no problem with that. Um, you, oh, and you know what I'm wondering if we should, if it wouldn't be a good idea? If over the next couple of weeks, and it's a daunting task, but. Uh, draft a letter to the new HR director, clearly laying out what some of our objectives are with. Human resources policies, um, and where we feel that we could use clear.
Priorities and objectives, yeah.
Guidance, whether it's in an employee handbook, or from them, or, and I'm sure, you know, I'm hopeful that the hire will be able to provide.
Some direction.
Um, yeah, I don't know if, because we keep on coming up on. These questions of human resources and.
Yeah.
Uh, now we have a professional who can help us, uh, in that, specifically in that capacity.
And even if we come up with our objectives and priorities, uh, she may be able to point out, oh, you left this off the list, or that should, like, that's fine.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not like just because we drafted, that's the end-all be all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't.
Do we want, I I think we should both work on that, because I'm willing to bet.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll come up with a lot of the same ideas and some different ones, and that's not a bad thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Letter to. And then when she sits down at her desk on July fifth to get to work, she can have a letter from us sitting.
Ah!
Hopefully not over long.
Yeah.
Um, so if that's not on that agenda, and we'll move on, thank you notes to children who love placed wreaths in the memorial parade. Um, did you get that? It was kind of on the.
I I did, I I have that on here, but I did not get an actual letter.
If you want to change the wording, uh, dear, there's six different children, thank you for helping the town, one of those who have lost their lives in the service of the United States Military by carrying a wreath that honors the memorial parade. We appreciate your assistance to the select board and this memorial ceremony.
That's good to me.
Alright, so.
It may be, it may be a little hard for some of them to get some of the language, okay, that'll be the first official letter that's, that's notatory and not.
So.
You need to go into school to get this one.
So I, oh, I would, um, motion that we, uh, sign, sign these, and then we'll just print them out and sign them later.
Second.
Susan.
May, may I ask a question?
Oh, yes, Mickey, before we go.
Uh, are these gonna be handwritten notes?
No, I have them typed up, Mickey.
Oh. Okay.
If, if you wanna see my handwriting, uh.
Well, mine, mine is worse.
You might realize why. You might realize why they're typed out. Um. Were you volunteering to write them?
No, mine is, my handwriting is worse, I I'm, I'm a lefty, I'm, mine is worse. Better than your father's, not much.
I can handwrite them for you when I return if you want.
She has a nice handwriting.
Yeah. Would you, would you?
I would.
Want to?
Yes.
Okay. So we're motion.
He has beautiful handwriting, yes.
Thank you, Melissa, that's very kind, especially given your workload when you get back.
Alright, so thank you, Melissa, we, so I will amend my motion to. Approve these thing, you know, to sign out the, on these thank you notes after they're handwritten, but the same word. And we had a second motion, and.
Yes.
Susan voted yes, I voted yes, and we will sign those letters.
Yes.
Once they're in beautiful penmanship.
I'm gonna put this in larger font, so that it's actually possible for you to read it on the fly here. Um, I realize we made, it's not like we're gonna pass it this second, but.
Yeah.
Me, actually.
So we're.
Hate this font, but.
We're dipping it, new business, uh, policy concerning employee response to select board communication requests.
The hashtags, because I, I didn't wanna just decide on the number of days.
Oh, I see, yeah.
I wanted us to discuss that.
Yeah, so, the meeting the week as usual.
Sure.
Um, I think. This kind of goes in somewhat in line with the chain of command. One, okay, one thing that is the case is, acting as a board, we only. Hold any real authority when we act as a board.
Mm-hmm.
And not on our, that being said, we need to do research and ask questions and learn. Outside of the meeting, we just can't, uh, direct. Employees in matters of, inconsequential matters, do this or don't do this, right, outside of the.
Part of that gaining information, which sometimes requires contact, and as we've already had once, there's been a situation where.
Yeah.
The employee wrote to us and asked us for something, I responded asking questions on the half of that request.
Yeah.
And got no response. And that's a problem, because then I'm being asked to make a decision without pertinent information.
Yeah.
And they're upset that that decision doesn't happen, but I'm not going to make it without the information.
Yeah, no, absolutely, uh, so I, what I will do is I will edit it.
I I'll send you a copy.
Yeah, to just make it clear.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And like I said, I, you know, my intent was to have that conversation, because I don't know what a reasonable number of days is.
Yeah.
But, um, insofar as we are asking for information, um, to just ignore a missive, um, I think is a problem.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And. Uh. I think it's reasonable to expect a response fairly properly, I, I mean, I'm not expecting it within an hour.
Yeah.
Maybe if some person has a reasonable reason why they didn't get to it, I, you know I'm understanding of that. But simply choosing, I don't, I don't wanna answer that question, is not really okay.
Yeah, I think that it could certainly help the communication, uh, uh, structure, uh, Melissa, you have your hand up?
Just so you know, the previous select board, um, did make a policy that we had twenty-four hours to answer any questions from the board.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Which what, which select board was that?
That was Don, Steve, and I believe John. I could find it in a minute.
I think, yeah, I. I think that's too tight of a timeframe for some matters.
If there, yeah, then if you're not on every day, it's a problem.
Yeah, I don't get to all my emails every day, um.
So, and like I said, I'm, I'm.
But no, but certainly.
Other timing, but we need to have something.
Certainly, uh, you know, as long as. The people who work under the chain of command of the select board are working under the chain of command of the select board. There needs to be a clear line of communication, uh, up and down. Um, and I think this would be a way of achieving that, we could throw in if we want. Um, we don't wanna put ourselves between a rock and a hard place, but something about the, the, the select board responding to. You know, when things come up the chain of command rather than down the chain of command, the select board in some ways is compelled to respond. Uh, we've done better and worse, uh, over time, you know, with different situations. Uh, you know, but, uh, I think the chain of command between the select board. And appointments under the select board. Um, appointments of the select board, uh, is very important.
I mean, you know, so for everyone, yeah.
And I'll, I'll work on that, but I wanna, I wanna. I want it to reflect that we understand that the select board can't take any official action outside of a meeting, but in order to be able to. Act at meetings, we need info, we need information, um.
And I I legitimately haven't ever asked anybody for anything for, for action purposes, just like, you know, I, I, I am.
Well, no, I asked, I asked Gareth and Brian, uh, last night after the financial committee meeting about twelve seventy.
Right.
Um, and I felt that it was appropriate, because I wasn't saying, this is what you need to do at twelve seventy, or this is not, but I needed to know what.
What the current situation is.
What the current situation is, and Gareth got back to me this afternoon.
Absolutely, and. And I think it's super important that we can do that, and, and I, I also asked Gareth for background on, um. How the detail rate was set, um, because that had got raised in a separate question.
Yeah.
Um, and it was really helpful for me to, to know, like, he was really clear about how it had been set and why it's at that rate, and, okay.
Alright, so I will get back on that policy, so.
Okay, I will, I will, did I send you a copy of it? I don't think I did, so I'll, I'll, I'll send you what I started with, and then you, it's easier to edit something than to start new.
Yeah, if you. Exactly, um, so yeah, just send that to me, you know, after the meeting. Um. So, new business number two, town clerk's office hours on Thursday were four PM to eight PM. And the new request is four thirty to eight thirty PM. So it's the same four hours, but half an hour later.
Right.
Um.
Yep.
I put it on the agenda because. We, because it, actions, decisions need to ha, you know, happen by the board.
Right.
Um.
And I'm okay with that change, my, my only thing was, uh, issue was the associated makeup hours, but we've already discussed that.
Yeah.
And I will tell her that it was our decision that she could pick from those days, that she needed to actually post those hours. Um, I will also tell you that I, I also did ask that she please change the message, the outgoing message on the clerk's official phone line. To reflect her current hours.
Yes.
Um, I do not know if that has actually occurred, but I did ask, it seems reasonable, since we asked her to change, you know, she officially changed her hours a while back, for that to get updated.
So if you, if you are reaching out to her, to the town clerk. About the, um, making that time, running to examine, and you will also tell her that we approved the.
Yeah, no, our town will tell her we also heard this. Absolutely.
Four thirty to eight thirty PM on Thursdays, uh, since it is a change in hours, we should probably. Motion.
Is that, I, I had understood that, that's what she wants to keep now, as a permanent change in hours, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would, I would, you know, motion to, so, Thursday office hours for the town clerk, four thirty to eight thirty PM.
Um, second.
Any public thought, any further discussion?
I do have one piece, I, I mean, I think it's related to this, I'm going to reiterate again. That, um, I would let, I don't have a problem with this particular thing at this moment per se, but. I do have a problem with seven and a half discretionary hours. And I would like to see us return to having the clerk here during more of the regular office hours, I, I don't. I, I don't, how it come with one evening a week? But, you know, she was, she wanted that change her hours to work till 10:00 at night, which I think is a little unusual to expect the public to come in at that hour. Um, and I think it is a public facing position. Um, I would like one of us to contact council concerning our, what the potential litigation issues might be. If we, how can we go about reestablishing those hours? Um, I don't, like, we, we do have a new HR person. Probably at the very least, we need to make sure we have a harassment policy in place with clear lines of who's responsible. But I, I am concerned that, um, I don't wanna see these unusual hours go on for too long.
Yes.
And I wanna know whether allowing them is putting us in a bad situation and whether changing that would put us in a bad situation.
Yeah.
I think we need guidance about what position it puts the town in, either way.
Yeah.
Do you wanna take that on, or do you wanna?
Yeah, I, I can ask council, um, I wonder to what degree, you know, the human resources director should be involved. Um, because that, this is kind of their profession, but they are gonna be swamped when they first show up.
Exactly, so we could be talking all the way till August before any changes realistically are made, if she starts to like fifth.
Yeah. Um, but at the same time, I feel like, you know, for the first time maybe ever, now we have a, a professional, you know, professional dedicated to this.
To have one, right, yeah.
And I would really like to see the select board at a place where we are not. And, and I understand out of necessity and out of history, the select board has kind of operated as, in many ways, as the HR function of the town.
Which is awkward for a lot of reasons.
But, it awkward for a lot of reasons. I think it'd be great to get to a point where the select board can function as an executive board focusing on setting policies and long-term goals and not, um, mired in the nitty-gritty of setting.
Daily things.
Schedules, which I hope the human resources director will be able to.
Underpick.
To help us with. I forget where, where we are at. I do see Alan's hand up.
So, so.
Oh, I'll reach out to, to council, and the question is, I can write it down so that there's no.
Right. The, I, I think the question is, um, we have allowed the clerk to work hours outside of the town administrator's hours. Because she feels, I mean, you can figure out how racist, we've allowed that to occur. Does doing that put us in an awkward situation regarding lit, litigation? In other words, are we in some way admitting that there is a problem, whether there is or not? Like, does that, if we then ask her to go back to normal hours, what's our liability in that direction? I mean, I know why we chose to accept those hours.
Yeah.
It just occurs to me, I don't actually know what the legal ramifications of doing that were.
Yeah. Um, I think, I, I will fire that off to Donna.
Um, the.
Yeah, okay. Ellen, Coburn?
Thank you. Um, I, I just would like to request that, that the town clerk or any other employee that works only toward the very end of the week have at least one, maybe even half day on a Monday or a Tuesday. I had an experience this week where I needed that, and I hardly ever have any dealings like that. But this time, I was not just thinking about myself after it happened. What if something happens on a Saturday afternoon or Friday? Say with a contractor who meets with a resident and wants a permit on Monday or Tuesday. Um, or in my case, I, I wanted to make a phone call to the state to, to make a point about something that happened on Friday. Nothing to do with anything that the clerk did wrong, but something that I thought that the state was doing wrong. And I couldn't, I couldn't really reach her until today. Then I learned that there was a personal reason for that. So perhaps she answers her emails normally on Monday and Tuesday, which would be fine then, you know. But I just think it's a good idea for any employee who only works late afternoon on Thursday into the weekend to have maybe a half day on a Monday or Tuesday, so people who need her in the beginning of the week could come in. Thank you.
Alright, and I mean, certainly, what we hear back from Donna, uh, could affect, you know, I would move forward with, with office hours. Okay, so if there's no objection, Susan.
Yep.
You will let the town clerk know that Thursday office hours can be permanently changed to 4:30 to 8:30 PM. You will inform her that the makeup days that the select board prefers would be Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday to hold office hours. Um, and I will reach out to Donna Brewer to ask um, if allowing work hours to allow employees to be separated from one another could help or hurt the town, you know, regarding litigation, which frankly, we could have entered executive session in some ways to discuss that, but I, I don't think it, it hurts. Anyways, I, I will do that. If there's no objection, all, all of those things will happen.
Okay.
Okay. You wanna vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Yes. Second?
Susan, yes. Justin, yes. Motion carries. New business number three, discussion of dissemination of August special election warrant.
So is, I understand it from Donna Brewer, the council, um, all we have to do is sort of post it on the website. But I, that is not enough for me.
So, from my understanding, and Melissa can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the normal places the constable needs to post the warrant.
Right.
And it's things like a couple bulletin boards around town, the telephone pole at the intersection of Swan Road, if I'm not mistaken, Nikki?
Yep.
However, she did say that it, that some towns do send out a mailing, including a sample ballot.
Yes.
Although the sample ballot is optional. And I, given the fact that I, in the 20 years I've lived here, I don't think we've had a special election. I don't recall one at any rate. Um, and I would rather see more participation rather than less participation in the election.
Yes.
I would be in favor of us actually sending the voters of Monterey a, a notice about the election, um, with or without a sample ballot.
Yeah, so I think that's a good idea. It could or could not include, I think we, we are maybe not, we're not required to mail out the warrant because it's not a town meeting.
Right.
But as far as I'm concerned, I think we should mail out the warrant. There's, okay, there's three things going on. I think we are probably on the same page that we should mail out the warrant. Should the warrant.
And the warrant would basically say that we're having election, right?
Well, I have two.
I'm not sure what that says.
I have a draft warrant from Melissa and a draft warrant from Donna Brewer.
Okay.
Because, um, they, Donna sent one, when we met with her the other time before the meeting, before we were done with the meeting, and Melissa also is very quick, so I have two draft warrants.
I'm not sure if I got those. Maybe I do.
Yeah, I can send, I can send you the draft warrants, which are very similar, because most of it's this legalese, uh, technical wording about spelling out the year number and stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, it gets to the point that we're having a special election and the term is still this. So I think we're on the same page. We want to send out the warrant. The question of whether or not we wanna include the election ballot, which is atypical for Monterey.
Right.
Uh, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it.
Right.
We could also consider whether we want to now going forward include the election ballot with the town meeting warrant. The, the sample election ballot, and last but not least, whether or not we want to send out a letter sooner than we sign the warrant, making an announcement, explaining, I know that I've had a couple people, uh, ask questions about it, and it might be good. It does cost a little bit of money to send.
It's a, it's like probably at least a thousand, around a thousand dollars, basically, printing whatever, when it.
Yeah.
And mailing even 700 would be.
So I think a, a warrant usually costs that, cause we get it printed at quick.
Okay.
If it's just a simple eight and a half by 11 sheet, we could probably save a little bit of money if we folded it ourselves, like.
Sure, but there's, there's still the postage.
The postage. So it comes down to, I don't even know what it stands for now. Last night it was 50 cents, but those.
It's about 50 cents. I, I was estimating 50, cause it's easy to divide the number of voters by two.
Yeah.
To get an estimate, it's not pretty precise.
Yeah, so that's a question.
Um, so I kind of, like, so I'm torn too. I would love the, I love the idea of the sample ballot. The downside is that I also think people should know that there's gotta be a law election, like, because we want people to be aware and to run and to participate in the caucuses and all the stuff that goes along with that. So sending something out sooner rather than later is a desirable thing.
Yeah.
Where are we, where do we pay for that out of, and how much money is in there?
So, I believe there's a separate line for mailing warrants, if I'm not mistaken, Melissa. Um, this, there is. I don't, I think we could probably squeeze that, I think that makes sense under that line, but also maybe select board expenses.
Okay.
Because certainly we would run short, cause I think there's about enough money to do two, this, an annual, and we assume there's probably gonna be a special just on average. Um, so this would be.
Extra.
Extra. But we, that's why we have different transfers, and it's certainly not something that we foresaw at a town meeting, so.
Of course not. Um, what was that, just, so, so we're talking, so are we now talking about two mailings, one to basically let people know that there is going to be an election, and one that contains the warrant and possibly the sample ballot?
Yes.
Okay, just, cause we're.
There, well, there's, so there's three decisions just to make now. Do we wanna mail a warrant? Seems like we want to.
Yes.
Do we wanna include the sample ballot with the warrant? Maybe that, eh, I don't know. Do we wanna send out an earlier mailing? If you wanna draft something up, I'd certainly be happy to consider it, I think.
Well, one possibility would be to send out the warrant earlier.
I don't know how, I know that Donna Brewer had said we couldn't sign the warrant until a certain.
Oh, okay.
Amount of time before. Melissa, do you have any info on that?
I don't, I, I didn't see that response from her. We, we couldn't sign it next week and, and mail it?
No, she didn't, um, she, not a response, not an email, but I thought she had said something when we met with her, like, and maybe she just said, oh, you don't usually sign it until a couple weeks or a month ahead of time, but I don't for, I don't see any reason why we couldn't sign it well, like, right now.
Yeah, I, I think she was referring to if we were gonna include the election ballot, then we had a certain timeframe.
Yeah, yeah, certainly, cause we, we.
We'd have to wait for the ballot, and we don't have one yet, cause we don't even have that yet, really.
Yeah, we would have to wait for caucuses and signatures.
Right.
Which is like, I think it's like 35 days before the election that caucus submissions need to be done, and before that is the, um, signatures.
If you're contacting Donna anyway, do you wanna go ahead and ask her if, if we are required to wait to si, to send the warrant?
Yeah, I can ask her that. Um.
I mean, I'm sure she knows that offhand. It's not like it's a complicated question.
And, um, if it works also, she had drafted warrant, and Melissa had drafted warrant, and Melissa's warrant actually included more information like that Julio is constable, and I have to look to see what differences there really were, if any. I mean, it's a pretty simple warrant, but I could send her like a pretty final draft, too.
Sure.
Uh, if there's no objection, I will reach out to Donna.
And I, and I, I'm fine with the idea of sending out an early warrant, or if we have to wait on the warrant and send it with a sample ballot to send out some type of letter just informing the electorate that due to the resignation of the other select board member, we are holding an election on date certain, time certain.
Yeah.
Um, uh, you know, just so people know, because they may, who knows? There may be people that had, would consider running, or we want them paying attention to when the caucuses are, you know?
So, we'll wait to hear back whether or not we have to wait to sign the warrant.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Town administrator's accounting software contract renewal.
So I sent you all the Vadar contract renewal. Um, if you had a chance to look over it, it's the same as last year. Um, town council has approved it in the past.
Yeah, I have no objection.
I have no objection either. I mean, we, we need accounting software, so.
I would motion to renew the accounting software, Vadar.
Second.
Contract. And is there any further discussion or public comment? There being non-call vote, Susan?
Second, yes.
Justin, yes. Motion carries. The Vadar accounting software contract is renewed. Uh, shared human resource director intermunicipal agreement.
Also sent you that draft, which has been approved, um, by all the town administrators that were involved in the process. And it has been reviewed by, I think, two other councils, and KP Law had reviewed it for us when we still had them. So if you are agreeable, if you can approve that tonight, that would be great.
My only, my only question, Article Eight miscellaneous provisions amendments. This agreement may be amended only by vote of the select boards or town manager of all of the towns, and any such amendment must be in writing and signed by each select board or town manager. Which is confusing to me. Because some towns have town administrators, not town managers, and furthermore, is, what if the select board and the town manager or town administrator disagree on an amendment? I'm not, I'm not expecting you.
I can have Mark remove that. I bet you it was in there because he has the power to make those changes in Barrington, but none of the other towns do. So I'll just bring that to his attention and ask him to remove it and make it only the select board.
Well, but then if it, if it doesn't fit for him, I mean, I want it to work for everybody. But I was just confused, because how can you have an or?
Could it, it could read, what if it read like or in the case of Great Barrington, the town manager?
That sounds good.
If only, if it's only Mark that, that that's applicable to, it could just say that.
Yeah, that's my only comment.
Um, so would you approve it if that change was made, where I can tell him to send it and then you guys can just sign it at a later date?
Yeah, I would motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement contingent on amending Article Eight miscellaneous provisions A amendments to reflect a definitive, um, authority on who must approve amendments um, to the agreement. Uh, select boards or town managers, it can't be left uncertain. That motion have a second?
Yes, second, sorry.
Any further discussion or public comment? There being non-call vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes. And a motion to approve the shared human resources director's intermunicipal agreement contingent upon the previously mentioned change carries. Okay, discuss next item of business. New business number five, discuss nature of appointments in advance of annual appointments. So, do you want to get to, uh, get into what you wanna get into, or should I say?
Go ahead, you can say.
Okay, so last year, we asked KP Law about appointments without a finite date, and Jared Collins had, uh, he's a lawyer at KP, but he wasn't one of her. He penned us a response. I can share that with you if you'd like. I don't know if that's.
I, I think Melissa already shared it.
Okay, so you have that.
The whole back and forth correspondence about that, yeah.
Furthermore, when I got on the board, we didn't appoint someone who was due for appointment for months. for months after the appointment had expired.
Is that?
Town council.
Town council.
And advice from town council and.
Was that, that town council or the following town council?
Advice from the same council.
Right.
Was that if someone was not reappointed but not voted no, they kind of continued on in a state of
Limbo.
Limbo, exactly. Now, I don't have that in writing. Um, but that was my understanding and that's the understanding that we operated under.
So, right, but I'm not, and I don't know if contracted services are the same as an employee either.
So I don't, I couldn't tell you other than that, that was an appointment, it wasn't a contract or something.
Right, but the, the, it's an appointment of outside council as opposed to an appointment of an employee that works directly for the town.
Yeah, Melissa?
So with Jeremiah, he actually was paid as an employee. He was part of the Berkshire County retirement system.
Okay.
Uh, now that was, uh, advice from Jeremiah, uh, Pollard. And also I don't have it in writing, but that's my understanding. I mean, he operated under that understanding for a few months with the town.
Okay.
If it's a question that you feel, if there's a question that you feel that you could use advice on from our current town council, is there a question that you would like to ask our current town council?
Um, there, there is. I, I just, it, um, when I spoke to her previously, um, one of the things that was raised was the nature of those appointments.
Annual appointments.
Annual appointment, or rather, yes, annual appointments, but annual implies they're for a year. Mostly they are, but not all appointments are for a year. There are some appointments that were required to make for other periods.
Yes.
Um, like sometimes three years or what have you.
Conservation commission, three years.
So appointments, I'll say more generally, but my question, the question that remained was whether or not those appointments are at will. In other words, are they at the will of the select board so that if you appoint someone, can you then unappoint them or are you actually creating a sort of binding contract?
So I, and actually, I would refer back to Collins, Jared Collins.
Jared, oh, that, that we had KP got.
He got into that. And he said, because we had that same question.
If you have it handy, tell me.
This is what he writes. Rather, he's talking about not needing to set finite terms of appointment. Rather, once appointed, the individuals in questions may hold their respective positions until they leave of their own accord or until the town decides to separate them from appointment after notice in an opportunity for a hearing, a right guarantee to all public employees.
But the, that's not an employee that's simply hired. Um, if, you know, when we hire the transfer station person, for example, we hire them, it's not an, it's not a, a termed appointment, right? We hire them indefinitely.
Yes.
Whereas we have a list of people that are coming up that we have to reappoint.
Yeah, we can reappoint. I mean, we could.
Right, they, they, we have to consider their reappointment. So the question is, are, do we actually have to do that? Like, is it that we're, are we periodically reappointing people that don't need actual reappointment?
So one, one thing that he mentions is that chapter forty-one of the general laws pertains to officers, employees of cities and towns. Certain sections of that chapter specifically govern the appointment of employees to particular town positions. So if it's expressly referenced in that chapter, it may say what the duration, you know, must be.
But if it doesn't?
If it doesn't, you know, we do have some discretion as to whether to make them indefinite appointments. And accordingly, without an identifiable duration of appointment for any of the positions listed, in my opinion, they fall under the general rule, the general rule, that maybe, they may be appointed for an indefinite duration and removed by the appointing authority, provided the basis for such removal would not be considered illegal. So the general.
And it would be illegal if we were violating a rule of discrimination or something?
That's what he cites here, discrimination on the basis of a membership in a protected class.
Right.
The general rule, and he cites AD versus Mayor Polio, is that the power to remove is a incident to the power to appoint. So basically, if the select board has the power to appoint someone, they have the power to remove them. You just need to go through the right steps and I will actually add that we saw uh, attorney-client privileged advice last year about how and the whole select board and the town administrator are aware of the, this advice about how to remove a appointed, uh, position? Uh, of someone in an appointed position. So that may also be something that would help you, you to
Understand.
Understand. Um, because certainly if.
Was that a written opinion or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I could get a copy of that.
I will send you a copy of that about removing an appointed. And certainly, I mean, it is something that says right in the selectman's handbook, if I recall correctly. There's some guidance on this as well in the select board handbook. You might just be interested in looking at that as well. Because I'm trying to remember, basically, yes, if you can appoint someone, you can unappoint them or remove them from office.
Typically, you're gonna need to be able to show cause in case they object.
Yeah, and though, but yeah, I mean, the general idea being if you, if we appoint someone, then we also incidentally have the power to remove that appointment. Uh, but things like a hearing would, would usually be required and obviously if, you know, we could, we could go through the, you know, it's a, it's a process and it's a process. Uh, but we have, I would say that we have a fair amount of reading material between the psych ward handbook and these previous council opinions. I would say why don't we hold on a ton?
Yep, I, I agree.
Ellen, do you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm trying to understand at will and for cause. I was under the impression that if an employee is, um, able to be removed at will, that it isn't, that for cause is not part of it. Am I, is that wrong?
I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a labor and employment lawyer. I, 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 Ellen, I don't wanna give you any advice that's not, you know, I can't offer legal advice. I'm sorry. It's, uh.
But do you know what at will means? Can you just explain at will?
Well, it's.
Because that's the.
No, I don't, I, I, I would, I don't wanna speculate and, and, and offer, you know, a legal opinion on, on something that I can speculate about, but if you look up, um, what's that? There's different legal websites and you can look up things like just cause in Massachusetts or at will in Massachusetts, but I don't wanna offer you my two cents on that.
I will say that I, I will look through these, but in the end, if, if somebody is an at will employee, which means we can choose not to renew them, but they're entitled to a hearing and at the hearing, we have, are, are we required to say why? Because otherwise, what's the purpose of the hearing?
Yeah, so I can, I, you, this.
How does that exactly work if we can simply choose not to renew them? But they're entitled to a hearing, what do we have to do at that hearing to be?
Yeah, the, the guidance that we received, the doc, I'm willing to send you a copy of the document.
You think you'll remember that? If it doesn't, I'll bring it up again.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, and we are, I have been reaching out to people on the appointment list to see if they wanna be reappointed uh, to certain groups and I just wanna make sure that people will wanna be reappointed and.
Yeah, because you don't wanna reappoint somebody who doesn't wanna be reappointed.
Yeah, so I have been reaching out and I've been also asking people who haven't, uh, weren't necessarily on the list, like if we're short people. Like, and if you find anyone for conservation commission, we're still looking for, there's things like that. We're always looking for. Appointments, so drum of interest. Um, but we should probably do that, what's next week, the twenty-second, then the twenty-ninth? Uh, because technically they all expire on June thirtieth and then they go into this deadline.
Right, so we have two weeks to finish that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, review, uh, Nikki?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, and this is a little facetious, but you do wanna make sure that they're still alive? Because I think last year you appointed one or two that were not.
Yes, Nikki, uh, I have been, I'm doing well-being checks on the appointed.
So that, that'd be sort of like they still wanted to serve. It could fall, falls under that one, I guess.
Well, yeah, I haven't, still haven't heard back on some of those people, but, uh, I will keep going. Yeah, no, I'm trying to, yeah.
That was my point.
Yeah, thank you. Um, new mail and correspondence received or to be sent. So we received a letter from Kathleen Ronchi, Ronkey from Maya discussing our insurance policy as it relates to potential litigation. And it doesn't say much other than that. When they see specific litigation, then they can tell us whether or not recovered by it, but she did list some basics of, basic deductibles of the policies. I don't really have anything to say other than I just wanted to add.
Um, the other two letters that I know we've gotten since this was posted were, um, the parks commission letter.
Yes.
Um, I, I think it would be good to ask town council if it is, uh, just for the public. The parks commission reached out to us to ask, I, I actually had put the letter up here, but now it won't let me access it without me signing in.
I cannot tell you.
Uh, the, the parks commission asked us if we could, um, determine if they could contact council to see if it is legal to, um, to restrict parking at the beach even though it is a great pond. And if it is legal, what options we have for so doing. Um, having received that, by the way, I did reach out to Sergeant Fahey to ask how the police department would feel about, were that too, obviously this would have to happen through a bylaw and get passed at town meeting. But how does the police force feel about the idea of going by and giving tickets to people who were violating that and they were like, if it's a town bylaw, we will do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Very eloquent, but that was the option.
So I wouldn't, you know, personally proceed on this, but the park commission is an elected commission and so they're requesting access to town council. Um, I would like them to put these questions in writing because I see, you know, I can foresee a phone conversation that lasts a while.
I think it'd be a great idea and I actually suggested that to Tracy also.
So, yeah, if there's no opposition, uh, I will, and by, by the way, this is just something that we received after the agenda was posted. Um, I will reach out to Tracy and ask uh, the park commission to put some questions in writing so that we can send Donna Brewer an email.
Right, sounds like a good one.
If they get back with questions in writing, would it be okay if I?
Yes, please.
For that to Donna Brewer. Okay, so that essentially, we're authorizing that contact with council in writing. The other good thing about writing is when someone discuss, you know, has a kind of phone call with town council, it doesn't, you know, it's in their mind, but the nice thing about having something is write and write is it can last for years and can be shared with others easily.
And, and it's clear communication in both directions. I'm all for it.
Um, all right, so I'll reach back out to Tracy on that. Was there some, was there another communication?
Did someone else have something? Oh, yeah, there was. Um, the one from Lori Shaw, is that the right name?
Yeah, I wanna, I will, I need to call the state ethics office and see uh, if this is something that I should participate in changing the title. Obviously, they're, they're requesting, you know, uh, something related to a direct family member of mine, so.
Do you, um, there was also, um, a missive from the town administrator regarding potential changes that would result from that? What do we need to, what do we need to do to investigate that part?
So I, what I wanna do is ask the state ethics commission to give me something in writing because
Okay.
If I should participate on this matter, then I should.
Just refuse yourself from it?
Refuse myself entirely.
Okay.
Um, which is something that I'm willing to do.
I will, are you okay with my responding to Ms. Shaw to ask, um, whether there would be any concomitant changes other than the title?
I don't, I don't wanna participate, you know, in any way.
Okay.
Feel free to do whatever you want as a, as a member, you know, to select board, as long as it's not. See, that's the thing is, we cannot take official action as board, but we can always ask questions, but I just, uh, I some, you know, I, I just.
I totally get it and I agree. I totally get the ethics issue. I completely support you. I understand where you're coming from and I think you're being really good about it.
I'm trying.
You're not gonna get any objection from me whatsoever. Um, I just don't wanna see them left hanging, so I will respond to her, tell her what the holdup was and ask some questions while we're waiting to know what the ethics board says.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure you know what I'm gonna do, because I don't, I'm not trying to hide anything. Um, I think that was all of those. Um, do you wanna hear about the Verizon thing before we go into the minutes?
Yeah, if you wanna just.
Okay, so as you know, I, I've already had a bunch of communication with Verizon. This morning, Ellen texted me to say her phone line was out again. There was no rain. So, um, I have four phone calls to Verizon getting passed from person to person to person, getting, being given another number, blah, blah, blah. Um, in the end, Ellen must have gone somewhere and gotten a ticket number. In any event, because by the second call, that was already appearing in the system, which was great, but I wasn't gonna drop it because the previous people I had talked to told me to go for escalations manager, so I was determined to get to escalations. Um, in the end, what actually I did get was a callback from, I wanna get her title right, the Verizon State Governmental Affairs Office, a woman by the name of Ellen Cummings, who, um, was really helpful, actually. I mean, let us hope that things go i- in the correct direction. So, um, she actually sent a tech out supposedly today to Ellen's instead of tomorrow, as the original ticket said. Um, and, uh, what she's gonna do is she knows that on a previous occasion, they had checked the wires from Barrington all the way to what she calls the slick, which I believe is the box at the corner of Fairview and Veritow. And she, she said she couldn't confirm that that's exactly where it is, but that's what a slick is. So I think it's probably that one. But what she's gonna do now is authorize a detailed, um, analysis of the line from the slick to the end of Veritow, which has not previously been done. She, the, the good news is they're going to do that. The bad news is it could take till mid-July because it's a pretty complicated process and has to be done stepwise. So basically what they're doing is testing the line serially to make sure they find where the problems arise and, and actually are. But that's more than we've gotten to my best of my knowledge previously, so I will consider that a win. Um, the other thing that I thought was really interesting was in the process of this conversation, she actually told me that Verizon has completed its poll build-out on Veritow. Which I was very surprised to hear, given our previous conversation with Mr. Chain.
Their make ready's?
Their make ready's, correct. Um, that is.
When that was?
She didn't, but she said they had completed them, so. I actually emailed Adam, but you know, that was this afternoon, so I, I'm not expecting that I'm gonna have. I actually emailed Adam, but you know, that was this afternoon, so I, I'm not expecting that I'm gonna have an instantaneous response.
Well, also, you know, on the polls, there's usually Verizon and National Grid.
Exactly. So I thought that I had understood it, that meaning when Adam was here, that National Grid had to do their make ready before Verizon could do their make ready. I don't know, but I did email Adam to say I'd happen to hear this because I was talking to her and she said this to me. I just wanted to check with you and verify that that was true, because if it's true, that's great news.
Yeah.
Um, but I just wanted to let you know that that little tidbit arrived in my lap unexpectedly. But, um, I also contacted, um, Smitty Pigmetelli's office and spoke, and sort of introduced myself and spoke to him about the problem and he's gonna also reach out to his contact at Verizon. Um, in fact, when I got the callback from the Governmental Affairs Woman, I thought that's why she called me, but it turns out, no. It was my four previous phone calls that had gotten her on the line, so yay, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's the progress.
And has your letter, has your letter gone out?
It is not because we didn't do it before Melissa wanted it, but we'll do it next week, yeah.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It may make you rude, but that's okay.
Yeah, gotcha. All right, should we get to work on some minutes?
Let's do some minutes. Yay.
Okay, I don't know if we can get through all of them, but if we can get.
I know, but we're gonna start on the 23rd, right?
If we can get those oldest two, then it'd be a good step.
Yeah, 23rd.
So the 23rd.
Just pulling them up. Okay.
Was.
So the problem we're gonna have here is that do, I don't think we have each other's, right?
No, you have, I haven't made any edits on this.
Okay.
Um, and I don't.
I sent them both to you at 5:30 today.
Yeah, I, I have them also. I have it pulled up. This one in particular, I have no.
Oh, goodness, okay, hold on. I, I, I did not check my email right before because I was doing something else, so let me see.
Well, this is only your edit.
Pardon? Oh, so you have my edit, so you didn't do any, okay.
So I'm going to.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2022 as edited by Susan.
Okay.
Third second.
Second.
Any further discussion on these minutes?
Not by me.
All right, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the minutes of 5:23, 2022 are approved.
Okay.
The next set is 5:25.
Do you have edits on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, do you, are you able to see?
Um, I'm gonna see if it will let me in. I, it has not, in fact, this is, next week, Melissa, we have to work on making it so that the system will let me in when I'm in the building. Oh, look at that, it's, yay. Uh, where are we?
So I see.
Is it under, is it under four tonight?
Four tonight, yeah.
Okay. Okay, 5:25. Is that what teaching not to double-check my email right before watching out the door? Okay. So wait, who's, who's orange?
I am blue and you are red.
And then there's orange.
I added David Lupe not to like.
Okay.
Um.
If you, if you hover over the change, it'll show you who made the change.
Oh, so well, okay. There you go, yeah, yeah, I got it.
If you click on that, you can actually see on the right side.
If I click on what? Like this?
Yeah, click on that little line or something.
This thing?
Yeah.
I think probably what I have.
Or review.
Do, yeah. Whatever.
Reviewing, I think if you click that, because that is the best way to do it.
There we go. Okay.
Um, so I would make one change right off the bat. I see I misspelled Lupiani. Is it Lupiana? I don't know how.
I don't know.
But are we, are you comfortable with that change?
Yes, please.
Okay.
You, you may fix any typo you find. I, I don't even require permission for fixing of typos. I'm all for it. And I, and that would include capitalizations. This just makes me, she mentioned the automark machine.
Uh huh.
Did you, did you correct that they only want $15 for the automark chip? I did ask her to confirm that.
Yeah, so the usual high cost, I guess, is the ballots. Because the minimum order is like a hundred or a thousand.
Actually printing the ballots?
Yeah.
Okay.
But then, actually, you know, I don't even.
I don't know. I, I just was wondering, because I, I did ask her to confirm. I was like, wow, only $15 for the chip? That's amazing.
I don't know if we still, I think we stopped to pay the regular price for programming and the ballots or whatever.
Okay, okay.
I think it's 15 for an additional item.
Okay. By the way, I, one thing I didn't get from Garrett was when the, when the rate, the detail rate went to 45, do you know the answer?
I don't know.
Okay, I see.
A couple of small things on 11, if you're there. I don't know if you're there yet.
I was on the 10th, but now I'm on the 11th.
Um, 12, I think it's I instead of E.
Or it's quite been, okay. Like I said, it's been.
Um, so many times the track change gets messy at this time.
By the way, are you guys gonna need a second session?
Yeah, I think we're scheduled, we're in the middle of scheduling a second session. Um, uh, participate means extra I.
Wait, is this supposed to be written drafted?
What it's supposed to say is the mediation process confidential, but the outcome, if it resulted in a written signed agreement, I don't know.
So it's drafted being replaced by written?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I would believe drafted, if that's what you.
That's fine, go for it.
I said he requested a week to review and make edits because it was just one week, wasn't an additional week for my member.
Okay.
Self-service does not, oh, I just changed abbreviations. And then we both deleted Smitty and wrote Pigmetelli, deleted Smitty or something. I cannot.
Where, where is it?
This is towards the very end.
Correspondence? Oh, right there, yeah, I deleted Smitty and, and wrote.
And then you deleted Governor, but I don't think, but did you? Um, it gets confusing with these track changes.
Right.
What if I did follow up with Smitty Pigmetelli, Adam Heinz, uh, Governor Baker?
Um.
Does that work for us?
Sure.
Now, I'm confused because I think. And I would also say that this should be the last one, the last seven minutes that we do tonight because I think it's hard to do on.
Okay. Yeah, it's really hard.
We're not running up against it.
Yeah, yeah, but it would be good to get these two off the board.
Absolutely. Um, so with those changes which we discussed, which I think were all like typos.
Yeah, there's not, it's not really much.
Then I would motion to approve these 5:25 minutes as I have it here, which I will send to Melissa.
Second.
Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes. Okay, and I will save that and make sure someone else. And where we, yeah, I would motion to table June 1 and June 8 until we can.
Okay, I'm trying to remember what the June 1 was then.
Because I think I've, I have done edits on June 1. I have not done edits on June 8.
And there's enough here that I'd like to look them over, so, but I guess I shouldn't do that.
Well, you can, well, now, you now have my edits.
Okay.
Because we disseminated it now.
Okay.
Now you can do whatever you want, which is actually one way that we could consider.
So we don't have to like do it over here, but we're gonna have some edits on the floor.
I know.
Sure, I'm okay either way.
I think, yeah, we, well, we can talk about how we want to do minutes going forward.
Okay.
I don't mind. Steve and I used to sit there and read through them. Maybe we'll figure out what works for us. Um.
I mean, I think they've, they're, they go pretty smoothly. We, you know, we're both making kinda editorial changes to make them flow smoother. And I, I'm, I don't think I've ever been uncomfortable with an edit you've made, so, um, I'm okay either way.
Okay, but we'll put off June 1 and June 8.
Okay, done.
Are there any comments and questions from the public?
Yes, there are. This is Mickey.
Hi.
Um, I have a concern, a question, a complaint, however you wanna put it. Um, transfer sticker applications were, as far as I know, not mailed this year. Uh, they, I don't know if they were mailed last year, but I certainly had a paper one that I filled out. Uh, I don't know how, I mean, I was, I hadn't even been following this and I said, well, I just must be sending them late. And I know you were waiting for the, uh, figures for the bulky waste that was, and if I remember correctly, when that, you were talking about the bulky waste, um, which was May 18th, uh, when it was finalized. I think Melissa said, I did, I didn't write it in my notes. But I think she said, well, when it was finalized, she would send that with the, um, application for the sticker. But nothing was sent and, uh, you know, and actually, I, I sort of.
I said I would send it with the stickers. When people got their stickers, it would go with that letter.
But how would they get their stickers?
The renewals were sent out via email.
They, all right, so I do not have email and I'm not the only person that does not have email. So that I think that there has to be a way that you can get your sticker and know that you have to get your sticker. Um, and even last night when I went into town hall, I said, well, maybe there's an application form on the table, which there is not, which I thought was the least that could be done. So that I had no way, except I saw two New York cars that had new stickers on their cars and they're going, oh, I guess the stickers are out. Uh, but I have not, I have not had any access to them or, you know, known that they were available.
So the applications are on the wall in town hall where all the other applications are when you're walking toward my office?
I, I did not know that. I looked on the table. I did not know that they're on the wall. I had no knowledge of that and I don't know that anybody else does.
I will, I will drop off an application at your house, Mickey, not that it solves the.
No, I can go, I can go in and get them. I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned that this is not something that is, I mean, something that we all have to have in the next couple of weeks and, uh, people don't know that and don't have access to them. Uh, except if you happen to know that there are applications on a wall going into the office, not on a table in the, I mean, that would be the first, and that was the only place I looked. Um, but I shouldn't have to go looking for them. And so, um.
As I see it, Mickey, there, there's two, you're raising two issues. The first is how is the town informing people that don't have email that it's time to do their stickers? And the second is where are the applications available if you don't have email? So of course, like, if we're informing people that don't have email through some other means, we could tell them where the applications were since they are out there. But the question is how do we figure out who those people are? Because it's, it's a lot more cost-effective for the town for sure to be sending out an email to everybody. But that doesn't help people who don't have email. So it is an excellent question, but I don't have a solution for it at this moment.
So Jim and I.
I, I didn't expect an answer tonight. I just, I just wanna voice this and, um, you know, if you're not letting people know and not letting all of the public know, it, it's sort of discrimination.
When Jim and I met with the transfer station attendants about three or four weeks ago, um, it was made clear to us that they were letting everybody know they needed to come to town hall or go online to renew their stickers.
Well, I was there Sunday and they, and actually, nobody even spoke to me. So, uh, and it was not busy at the moment and I was there the week before and nobody spoke to me. No, I actually, I did, I went to somebody and spoke to them because I had a, an odd thing to drop off. But last week, nobody spoke to me.
Melissa, um, this is something I can, we can bring up at the next transfer station committee meeting, but there is a lot of signage up there, but perhaps preparatory, each year preparatory to, within, within a couple of months of when stickers need to be renewed, it might be worth a temporary sign of some kind. Because it's a lot to ask for the employees to be saying that to a person and making sure that everybody gets informed. But at least having a sign that was like, I don't know, colorful and loud, hey, reminder, get your new transfer station stickers, they're gonna expire. Might be one way.
But you have to know where to get them. You have to know how to be able to get them.
But you also have to know that you need to get one.
Yeah, both. You know, once you got one, you may, you may forget that you need another one. You really do. Um.
I'll text Jim and ask him to put the sign up because I know in years past, they had one there.
Okay, that would be great. Thanks, Melissa.
Yep.
Any other public comment? Uh, motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, mo, uh, meeting adjourned.
Bye.
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 Please. Another successful.